Welcome, everyone. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of the Honkamenum Language Group, in whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. Recognition of Visitors, Announcements, and Trustee Updates. Again, welcome to the visitors in our gallery and to those who are joining us online. We have four announcements tonight. Do I have any trustees with an announcement? Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you very much. Foster Family Month, October is Foster Family Month in B.C., which marks the 34th year of celebrating the individuals and families who open their homes to children and youth in care in B.C. These caregivers work hard to ensure that the young people in their care are provided with a safe and healthy home, and are cared for and nurtured through some of the most difficult and formative years of their lives. There is an urgent need for foster caregivers for children and youth throughout B.C. Anyone who is interested in becoming a foster parent is encouraged to visit bc fosterparents.ca for more information. And a big thank you to all Richmond foster families.
Thank you. Trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Literacy Month, celebrated in September in B.C., increases awareness of the importance of literacy and raises funds to support community-based literacy programs and initiatives across British Columbia. Literacy provides opportunities for all of us to make a substantial contribution to the education, growth, and prosperity of Canada. Beyond reading and writing, literacy allows us to understand it is crucial to thriving as an individual and communities. The 2024 theme for Literacy Month is "Literacy: The Ripple Effect", which highlights that improved literacy skills have a ripple effect, helping them to improve quality of life at home, at work, and in the community. We encourage everyone to connect and celebrate literacy each and every day in their school, home, and community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. World Teachers' Day is held annually on October 5 to celebrate and recognize the vital role teachers around the globe play in nurturing and educating students. The theme for World Teachers' Day 2024 is empowering educators, strengthening resilience, building sustainability. The 2024 celebration will, in these challenging times, recognize how teachers have emerged as a beacon of resilience, adapting and innovating for their students. The Richmond Board of Education would like to express their gratitude to all teachers who contribute to making the Richmond School District the best place to learn and lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hamaguchi?
September 30 is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This statutory holiday allows us the opportunity to reflect on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's findings and resulting calls to action. We encourage all in our community to reflect on the findings of the Commission and to read the 94 Calls to Action. Orange Shirt Day began in Williams Lake in 2013, honoring the Indigenous children who were sent away to residential schools in Canada. It has become a national movement to recognize the survivors of residential schools, honor them, and show a collective commitment to ensure that every child matters. Acknowledged every year at the end of September, Orange Shirt Day opens the door to conversations on all aspects of residential schools. It is an opportunity to create meaningful discussion about the effects of residential schools and the legacy they have left behind. The Richmond Board of Education is committed to reconciliation and invites all members of our school community to participate in Orange Shirt Day and take the time to reflect on the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30.
Thank you. Moving on to Item C. Madam Secretary-Treasurer, are there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Yeah, Chairperson, all materials have been made publicly available on the district's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two. Pardon me. Are there any additions or corrections to today's agenda? Oh, I just, sorry. Trustee Sergeant?
Yeah, I would like to add BCSTA election advocacy press release to the agenda.
Sorry, BCSTA election?
Advocacy press.
Thank you. And let's see, I'm going to put that. You're with me? New business will make it Item B. Trustee Yang?
Uh, no, that was.
Oh, good.
What I was going to suggest, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, that's, I've made that Item B. Can I have a mover and a seconder?
I should, I still have correction?
Sorry?
I still have agenda correction on the page four. It's like the products. Page four. And already top. The same as the page. September is Monday, October 15 is Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Same.
Same. That can be, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Wong. So go ahead, I'm sorry, Trustee Yang.
Oh, so moved.
So moved, okay, and seconded? Trustee Wong, and all those in favor? Thank you. Okay. We have no presentations, briefs, or special recognition this evening, but we are open for questions from the public with any items regarding, pardon me, any items on the agenda. Thank you.
Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association. And it's an honor to be here tonight, and I thank you trustees for your commitment to public education. I have, I do have a question, and it's kind of my annual question whenever we have the statements, the financial statements. And I do want to say, I really appreciate, first, the review that you find on the financial highlights, because it is a very easy-to-read document, and it gives people a very good overview of the district and, you know, both the opportunities and challenges in terms of finance, the finances. So the discussion and analysis really thank all the staff that are involved in writing this and making it really user-friendly so that people can, you know, try and make heads or tails, because of course, those of us who don't do accounting and audits on a regular basis, the financial statements can be hard to read. So a great appreciation for that. So I know I have to ask a question. So I am going to ask a question that's in relationship to page 165. And this is an annual question I really ask. This is the Statement of Operations for Special Purpose Funds, and I'd like to point out that for classroom enhancement staffing, and really, this is for, my understanding, that's for teaching staffing, that it is $43 million. That's $43 million. And the way I look at that in terms of average salary, my question is, is this correct to assume that this is about 430, 420 FTE of teachers?
Yeah, so the teacher FTE last year was 355. And in addition to that, we do have some overhead. Overhead. My apologies, overhead is on the other line. Yes, so yeah, this is for all the teacher staffing salaries and benefits as well. Therefore, it's a little bit higher than just the $100,000.
Okay. So I point that out because this is a great opportunity. That fund comes out of Letter of Understanding number 17. It's now actually number 12. And this is from the fight teachers put up to get a restored language back. And we did that through multiple rounds of job action, and ultimately, the Supreme Court of Canada where we won. And when I always look at that number, that number represents about 20% of the staffing for teachers. It comes from that special purpose fund. And that is from both the hard work of teachers in order to get that language back. But I also like to thank those who were here in Richmond in the past, who were here in the 90s, because it was the vision of those past leaders on both sides of the bargaining table, the district and the RTA, who came to agreement on that language. And it was to support inclusion. So a lot of that was supporting inclusion and people, you know, looking to the future and saying, we need to do more, we need to have smaller classes, we need to think about the complexity, we need to think about the specialist teachers who are supporting those classrooms. And really, they were visionaries. The unfortunate part about this is that that language really is stuck in the 90s. Classrooms have become far more complex, and yet, that language stays the same, and it actually needs to be improved. So I point this out because, of course, we are going into provincial election. There's a lot always at stake in a provincial election because you don't know where you're going to land and where your government's going to be and what priorities they have. And also because it is a bargaining year for the public sector, but most importantly, for teachers. And this is our opportunity where we, you know, we look at improving language and improving. Always, I'd say, the history of teachers is actually to try and improve supports for classes, because better supports for classes make for better working conditions for teachers. And it's always the heart of us is to support students in the classroom. And sometimes we do that at great sacrifice. So I also point out that this number, 43 million, what a benefit that has been to the district. In 2017, we were at the precipice of laying off 100 teachers, but our language came back, and we are way further ahead as a result of that language coming back, and you didn't have to make those cuts. And I know that wasn't something you wanted to do, but that's where we were in 2017. The last thing is just because I heard, you know, the announcement of it being Literacy Awareness Month, I would like to point out that where there's opportunity and challenges, and we have great challenges with recruitment retention, finding enough teachers to fill positions, that continues to be obviously a problem. And everybody's putting everything they can in order to fill positions. And there's a lot of creativity going on. But one of the things that we've actually been able to do, because we've worked together, is we actually do have specific support this year that came out of a settlement agreement for literacy and numeracy. And so what we are able to do this year, and this is an agreement between RTA and the district, is to actually support teachers in schools in elementary with some collaboration time where the focus is on literacy and numeracy. And in secondary, we have some literacy-numeracy facilitators who are helping work with teachers in order to put a focus on literacy and numeracy. So these are, you know, opportunities you need to know about, and I hope you hear about them this year, because I expect January, February, I might be coming back to you and saying, this, we tried this, it worked great, and it's an important strategic priority for you, and this is a model that can work. So with that, I say thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Baberstock. Okay, move on to item number five, Executive Report from our Superintendent.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is our first public board meeting for the 2024-25 school year. So of course, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff, students, and families for a successful first month of school. Our schools are busy places, and I know we've only been back just this month, but it feels like we've been at it for many months. So this September, we welcomed more than 22,000 students in our district, including many international students. I want to extend a warm welcome to all, especially to families who are new to our district and to all the new students as well. So as we often say, we appreciate and we are thankful to families for entrusting the education of their children to the work we do each day in our district. I know that from time to time, we have parents and guardians who have questions about, questions or concerns about their children's education. As we often do, we say, try to address those issues with your child's teacher or principal of the school. There's so much for us to celebrate within the Richmond School District. We have high graduation rates, and our students perform, consistently perform well in provincial assessments. And of course, we are always committed to continuous improvement. And that means that even though we have strong academic results, we always have to look, we always have to look and ask the questions of where we could do, we could do more to ensure that all students, regardless of their personal circumstances, continue to thrive. I'm always grateful for the exemplary staff who work in our district in creating, welcoming, engaging, and inclusive learning environments in our schools and in our workplaces. So building on those strong academic results that I mentioned, our focus this year remain on supporting student success. They are well done and in love for learning. This year, we'll also engage in important conversations about the next iteration of our district's strategic plan. As you're well aware, our current plan, 2020 to 2025 strat plan is close to the end of cycle. Unlike other school districts that are in similar situations, we're engaged in that process. And as we engage in that process, of course, we'll do that work in concert with our partners and getting feedback not only from our partners, students, and community as appropriate to ensure that we continue to provide the best education possible for every student in our district. The new strat plan will serve as a roadmap for continuous improvement and will guide us in setting priorities, allocating resources, and making informed decisions that benefit all the students who attend our schools. As we embark on this journey, let us also remember the values of respect, kindness, and compassion. These principles are the foundation of our school communities, and they will guide us as we work to make the Richmond School District the best place to learn and lead. Each public, each public board meeting starting in October, we'll hear directly from students on how we are meeting the goals in our strategic plan. And I think it will be very important to hear from those students as they bring that to life in the boardroom. In closing, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and staff across our system for their unwavering commitment to our students and our schools. I'm excited to see what we achieve together this year. And that's my executive report, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item six, which is approval of minutes of prior meetings. We have a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, June 19, 2024. Regular, we also have regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, June 19, 2024 for approval. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Trustee Yang, seconded by Trustee Hamaguchi, all those in favor?
Oh, just a quick comment.
Oh, sure.
On the minutes, I know that there was some confusion on two particular votes with respect to AED and naloxone at the last board meeting. And I'm glad that the meeting minutes have now clarified that there were two trustees that voted in the negative for both recommendations. So I just wanted to note that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have moved, seconded, all those in favor. So carry, all right. Record of a special in-camera meeting of the board held Monday, July 8, 2024. Record of a special in-camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, August 7, 2024. A special meeting of the board held Wednesday, August 7, 2024 for approval. May I have a mover and seconder, please? Moved by Trustee Hamaguchi, seconded by Trustee Yang, all those in favor?
I have a question on the E. It's a special meeting of the board held Wednesday, August 7.
Right.
You can see that, you can go to page 20. So documents, right, the date is August 19.
August 19.
You check with page 20?
Bear with us for a second. It's due August 19, 2 p.m. We have that.
It has been corrected, yes.
It will be corrected.
August 7, not 19.
Right.
You're correct already?
Yep.
The document is 19.
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, so all those in favor, thank you. Thank you for that, Trustee Wong. Record of a special in-camera meeting of the board held Monday, August 26, 2024. Okay? Moving on to item seven, we have business arising from prior minutes. A, naloxone and automated external defibrillator. Report from the Superintendent of Schools and the Executive Director, Human Resources. And it's attached.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Before I invite the Executive Director, Major, to present her report, I thought I'd provide a few remarks to situate the report that is part of the package for your reference. Firstly, the health and safety of students and staff remain our top priority in our school district. Our schools are safe places to learn. We have a code of conduct, a district code of conduct, that makes it abundantly clear that students are prohibited from having alcohol or illegal drugs while in school. We believe education is key to building knowledge and understanding. We want our young people to make right choices and to practice healthy lifestyles. Ongoing instruction is provided to students through the B.C. Physical and Health Education Curriculum. And in addition to the B.C. curriculum, K to 12, there are supplementary resources that are available, including the Drug Literacy Curriculum that was developed by the Centre for Addictions Research of B.C. and additional support for students, school staff, and families. And that's available through the Expect, Respect, and a Safe Education, which is called the ERIS website. And I would encourage you to check out that website. The link to that website, it's included in the report. And there's excellent resources there for students, staff, and families. And I share that because I think it's important to make it abundantly clear that we are committed to education and understanding as part of our commitment to ensuring that young people make choices, good choices, and safe choices. By installing AEDs and adding naloxone kits to first aid stations in our schools only make our schools safer for students, staff, visitors, and parents. And that's why we're doing this. I want to emphasize that the naloxone nasal spray kits will be securely stored in schools. They're not in classrooms, they're not places where students can access. But this is, this is an additional safety device, a safety option that is available. And you hear from our Executive Director, Major, that given the two options, we've elected to go with the naloxone spray as it's less intrusive, even though it's a little more pricey, but we believe is the right approach to ensure, again, that consistent with our commitment to ensuring that when students attend our schools, when parents or members of the public are in our schools, that our schools are safe places and recognizing that, again, these are precautionary measure. It does not suggest that these activities or that we, that this is a common occurrence in our schools, but rather that in the event of an emergency, the event of an emergency, we want to make sure that everyone is safe in our schools. At this time, I'd like to pass it over to our Executive Director, Major, to present her report, and we'll be happy to respond to questions from trustees, as you wish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent UC. Good evening, everyone. You will find the Implementation Plan Report for AEDs and naloxone beginning on page 23 of your package. This report serves to update the Board of Education on the implementation progress of two significant resolutions passed during the public board meeting on June 19, 2024. These resolutions focus on enhancing health and safety protocols within our school and facility buildings. It's a reminder, these resolutions read, that the Board of Education-approved first aid kits be augmented to include naloxone kits and the installation of automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, in schools and district facilities. And secondly, that the Board of Education directs staff to prepare an Implementation Plan Report for the September 2024 Public Meeting of the Board, which is this evening. This report will include, but is not limited to, associated costs, timelines, training requirements, and engagement processes with partner groups. These initiatives align with the district's strategic plan, specifically Priority Three, Goal Two, which focuses on optimizing district facilities to ensure they are safe and conducive to learning, and Priority Four, Goal Three, which emphasizes maintaining a progressive workplace that values and supports employee health and well-being within a culture of care. The report provided to you in your package addresses key aspects of implementation for both AEDs and naloxone kits, as supplementary first aid equipment in district buildings as requested by the board. It also highlights links to B.C. curriculum and resources to support healthy choices that promote physical, emotional, and mental well-being. When considering the implementation plan, we know that education is key to building knowledge and understanding that support healthy choices for youth and adults. Learning opportunities for students will occur within ongoing classroom lessons as provided through the B.C. Ministry of Education and Childcare prescribed physical and health education curriculum and a variety of supplementary ministry-recommended resources. A thorough assessment identified the need for 116 AEDs across our district sites, determined by the size of the buildings and their populations. For example, most elementary schools will require one AED, while larger ones may require two. Secondary schools will require three AEDs each. The total estimated implementation cost for AEDs is $180,000, which encompasses equipment purchase and installation costs and the additional costs for securing storage boxes for AEDs in our non-office locations. While the naloxone is available in both the nasal spray and injectable form, the nasal spray is recommended due to its ease of administration and minimal training needs. It is estimated that the district will require 113 naloxone nasal spray kits with a total implementation cost of approximately $12,700. Each of these kits will be securely stored in school and site offices and potentially other designated first aid areas, ensuring accessibility in the event of an emergency. All naloxone kits will be securely stored and only accessible by designated trained individuals within each site. As part of its WorkSafe B.C. and QP and RTA Collective Agreement employer responsibilities, the district is required to identify first aid attendants at each district site and provide annual occupational first aid training for those employees through external providers such as St. John Ambulance Services, Canada. Each district site has at least one primary and one backup first aid attendant. The number of staff trained for each site depends on the number of employees at the site and the nature of the work carried out by those employees. The district training will include both AED operation and naloxone spray training in addition to providing opioid awareness strategies as part of the district's commitment to staff and student safety. as part of the district's commitment to staff and student safety. The district will facilitate Level One Basic and Level Two Intermediate First Aid Training Sessions, which will cover AED use and opioid response. The chosen manufacturer will provide specific training on AED operation and its maintenance. In addition, free naloxone training videos will be made available for health and safety teams to ensure all first responders are equipped to administer naloxone effectively. For communication, regular updates on health and safety initiatives will be communicated through the District Health and Wellness Bulletin, ensuring all of our staff are informed. The Health and Safety Department will provide training opportunities and resources fostering continuous learning and adaptation to the evolving needs of the district. Engagement with employee partner groups will help refine the training programs and implement, implementation strategies, ensuring they meet the diverse needs of all district employees. Our next steps are for the Health and Safety Department to initiate this implementation plan. This plan will include the ordering and installation of AEDs and naloxone kits across the district, as well as coordination with our facility staff for the installation of the secured storage boxes in the designated locations. Ongoing communication and engagement with our partner groups will be prioritized to ensure smooth implement, implementation and address any challenges that may arise. The board's commitment to improving health and safety measures through the introduction of AEDs and naloxone kits highlights a proactive strategy to safeguard students, staff, and community members during health emergencies. This comprehensive implementation plan not only aligns with the district's strategic goals, but also reinforces the importance of creating a safe and supportive learning environment. The Health and Safety Department is dedicated to ensuring that training needs are met and that resources are effectively utilized to enhance overall well-being within the district. Thank you.
Thank you both for a very fulsome and informative, um, report. Um, it helps a lot with understanding. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments that they'd like to? Go ahead, trustee Sergeant.
Well, thank you very much. I know staff, lots of staff have been working on this. And, uh, I'm confident that our partners have been at that table as well. And that was a big question I had because this puts a lot of onus on staff that work in the building. A, um, to make sure they're cared for and they feel cared for, but also, um, the training is really, really important. And, and I'm sensing from this report that it's fully supported by our, our partner groups, uh, as far as our employees. So that, that makes me really happy. Um, I think a reflection annually would be really important because there are other districts that have done this, but I think it's important. Is this working for our staff? Are there things that we should be thinking about? Um, you know, for our students, what are the questions that are coming up? And then I just really remember me, uh, Mina Doer coming before us last year when we were considering this, the Richmond Health Officer, and she was giving us information about the machine and the, and the spray. But she was really, I got the sense, pushing us to make sure that we talk about prevention. And so I really think there's a small gap there. And I would really like to talk about that more and learn more, you know, even if it is a budget item. You know, how can we do better around that? Um, and I took that really to heart on that presentation, that she said, yes, you can do this. Our numbers are extremely small, but I think prevention is something that we all could do better at. So I know that you said the ministry also is putting resources out, et cetera, but how are we working with those? You know, how is the board supporting all of that? And what are we missing around prevention? Because I do think they have to go hand in hand. So thank you very much for all your work too. And for Chris, who's not here, but he's here. I know in the paper, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Hamaguchi, followed by trustee Dublottney, and I see.
Well, the naloxone kits are obviously one-time use. The AEDs, um, how many, are they, when they're stored, are they sort of plugged in like your, like a phone? And so when you use it, it's ready to go, but is there, you can use it as many ti- I mean, hopefully we don't use it at all. But if we do, can you, it be used multiple times? Like how long, how many charges? Um, I don't know if you have that information yet.
If I may.
Yes, absolutely.
I actually do not have the information on knowing how many times, uh, it can be used. Um, but definitely we can, we can get that provided to you.
Right. Uh, the other question is, last year, we had a, a student group come and talk about, um, they were a team and they carry pagers. Trying to think of Palmer School or being there? Okay, so, uh, there was a kind of like a flying team of students who carry pagers. And so when this program kicks in, um, uh, does that negate the need for that team? Or does you combine the two or?
So if I may, through, through the chair, um, we, we absolutely, in our high schools, have, uh, teams of students uh, that support in first aid. When we're looking at some of these higher-level interventions, this is where we are looking at training our staff. Our staff identified, uh, first aid responders on, in the school, that primary and the secondary contact, uh, within the schools. That'll be our training focus.
Okay, trustee Dublottney.
Well, thank you, um, just so, um, I, I just want to commend the report. I mean, it was very fulsome, it has excellent information in it. And, um, I'm glad to see this initiative moving ahead. Um, there was some discussion by trustee Sergeant suggesting, um, we reflect annually. I wouldn't want to just reflect annually on AEDs and naloxone and whether it's working because I think that would be difficult, even, you know, especially since, you know, we don't know if we're going to have events like that. Um, but, you know, we could reflect annually on our supplies because we, um, also have earthquake supplies in large numbers. And a number of years ago, you know, we found our, um, uh, crisis response, um, policies, et cetera, were lacking, especially in the area of earthquake supplies. And so, um, you know, we had, uh, we budgeted, um, for, uh, someone to look into that and to do it, an analysis and study and to make, ensure that we were, um, you know, bringing those standards up to, uh, up to, um, where they should be and the equipment too. So if we're going to look at it, I think we need to look at all of it. And make sure that we're staying current in practices and training and prevention because really the school district does have a duty of care for everyone, employees and students. So, um, I think, you know, I have to really commend everybody that's worked on this. Um, you know, naloxone, uh, AEDs are not new, but the equipment, um, has come a long way since, um, they were first introduced. And to my understanding, the district did have, um, AEDs and, uh, that were given to us, um, during the, um, Olympics. And I guess there was some concern about liability, and so they were taken out, um, of all schools. Uh, and, and that, none of that was the knowledge brought to the knowledge of trustees. So, uh, you know, I think it is important to share all this information. Uh, AEDs have come a long way and they're very user-friendly and I do believe they can be used over and over again. And naloxone, I mean, that's new knowledge, um, but we are in a crisis and accidents can happen. So I'm really feeling, uh, much more comfortable with, um, with these things in place. And I think we should always be looking at our, um, safety practices and, um, you know, and, and keeping our, uh, supplies and our prevention up to date because, as I said, we have a duty of care and we have many, many students and many, many, um, staff members and parents in our buildings. And it's, uh, very important that they are safe. And that is actually mentioned in our strategic plan. So, um, thank you very much, um, for the report. And, uh, I'll rest a little easier now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
Thank you, chairperson. So my question is that, um, now is a really appreciate for the, the staff get that report out, the reported all the cost of the AED and the naloxone. And we can see now the, the cost of AED is, uh, one hundred eighty thousand and naloxone is, uh, one thousand, um, twelve, uh, twelve thousand, twelve and thousand and seventy hundred. So, uh, add the training, the total is, uh, almost two hundred thousand. So I'm just concerned because this, the cost is not provided at the June nineteenth, before the vote. So my question is that the money is where to come from? I need to come to the public, no, where is, is that? Is that the budget before or now this is a new equip, right? So the money is where to come from to get this, uh, yeah, safety equip?
Oh, sure. Uh, thank you, trustee Wong. Uh, through the chair, I'm happy to respond to your questions. So, yes, uh, following the board's resolution passed in, in the June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, board meeting. So staff, in order for the staff or the district to effectively implement the board's resolution, it is really important for staff to, um, uh, to have the necessary resources to carry out the board's decision. So, um, by reviewing, uh, during the, um, year-end operating, uh, uh, result analysis, by reviewing the, um, Health and Safety Department's operating budget, uh, we do have, um, the operating surplus in the previous year, in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. And we were able to, um, uh, provide the funding source to support this initiative uh, in, in the amount of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, yeah, the funding source is from the Health and Safety Department's budget and some H R general administrative budget. Um, so it's been covered, uh, through the twenty-three, twenty-four operating, um, expenses, expenditures.
Thank you. So, uh, one question is that, is AED need to register? Every, every, each AED?
Through the chair, if I could just clarify, you're asking if eight, each AED needs to be a registered device? Can I, can I ask, registered with the district or can I ask for just some clarification?
I see some information in the AED dot C A, say, they say that the register, AED need to register. I'm not sure where to go to register. Yeah.
Thank you. So all of our AEDs, um, would, would come to us. They'd be installed, they'd be inspected, and they'd be maintained by the company, uh, who we purchase from. So they would all be, um, approved purchases that we are making to install in the schools, and they will be properly maintained through the company.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Belisa.
Uh, thank you, madam chair. And by the way, thank you, uh, to the staff for preparing this implementation plan report. Now, my question would be, um, AED, uh, is supposed to assist a person experiencing sudden cardiac arrest? What mainly propelled the district for, uh, th- this, uh, electronic medical device? What kind of, what give rise to a cardiac arrest? Is it, can you further explain what would be the, the causes of this cardiac arrest? And secondly, uh, the, the expense, the expense for this, uh, I guess, recommendations would be around a hundred ninety-two, a hundred eighty for the AED? And I think, uh, naloxone around twelve thousand seven hundred, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, uh, I know this, this are very important in terms of the recognizing the need for health and safety. My question is, if we are spending this money, have we spent? Is there any case, first, cases where we have to, uh, in our district, having this kind of episode? And secondly, if we are spending this kind of money, are we spending the same for the prevention program? A prevention program of the, for the district, which I think, right now, the, the, uh, the problem, uh, here in Canada and in B C, there are so many who are suffering because of the, uh, drug issues, uh, in our, in our communities. I would be happy to listen to your point.
If perhaps, uh, uh, truly chair, uh, perhaps I can, uh, I can take some of this. Uh, certainly, uh, maybe I'll respond to the second part of your question. Uh, the first one, obviously, was a question that perhaps would, uh, would be, uh, better directed to Dr. Dwar. And I think, uh, given the medical, uh, uh, expertise that she brings to this. Um, the, uh, with respect to, uh, uh, whether or not there've been an episode. Uh, and we, there are a number of, uh, proactive measures we have in our schools uh, to ensure student health and safety. Um, we have, uh, EpiPens, we have different examples of ways in which we, we respond. We have staff who are really caring and thoughtful and create safe spaces in our system that, thank goodness, we don't, we don't encounter issues of, of safety. But if it does happen that we have a student or a parent at, at a school event after hours, or students on a field trip and came, come in contact with a substance, uh, accidentally, we want to make sure, and I think parents would want us to, to do everything we can to make sure that that student is safe and that we are able to act in a way that is prudent. And I think that's what this is about. So, uh, I, I fully understand the question around whether or not, uh, there've been precedent to this. To my knowledge, I don't believe we've had an episode in our schools with respect to, uh, 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 you know, uh, at least in the short time that I've been here. Uh, now, you did hear from the students directly in June, uh, uh, how they had to intervene in a medical situation, in a number of situations in schools. And thank goodness, we were able to, those students, those young people were able to act proactively to save a life. Uh, so that's the context for this. We fully understand, in fact, I would be more than happy if, uh, we never use this in our schools. Uh, but in the event that there's an emergency, we want to make sure as caring adult, caring adults and our role as local parenters, and I think we all agree that parents want their children to be safe, is the number one, number one priority for every parent, that their child is safe. So as a district, I think that, uh, I am, I am pleased that we're having this conversation because, uh, anything that we can do to ensure student safety and staff's safety, uh, it's critical. So I hope, uh, uh, trustee Belisa, that I'm able, that I've been able to respond to your, your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much. I, uh, just wanted to take this time to quickly echo, uh, thoughts of some of my colleagues and really just to thank, uh, uh, Ms. Major and, uh, and our superintendent for, for this, uh, report. I know, uh, this being your first report to us, uh, on your own, I, uh, very much appreciate that. Um, yeah, I, I think, um, with respect to transparency and the level of detail, um, that is certainly exemplified in this, uh, document. And I think, uh, the information is abundantly clear. So, uh, I don't think there's, uh, any doubts about that. Um, and I think, and, and again, just as, um, the secretary treasurer, uh, had mentioned, um, this cost is coming out of, um, our district's health and safety budget. So this is not additional dollars coming to the board for approval. Um, one other thing I did, I did want to mention as well, uh, was, uh, just to thank staff uh, for the clarity, uh, regarding, uh, what is, uh, the subject at hand, uh, tonight versus, uh, the prevention and education work that is also ongoing. These are two tracks, um, uh, and both are, uh, very. And both are very essential, very important. And as the superintendent noted, education on drug prevention is in our curriculum. I encourage folks to go read up on it on our website, along with various resources that the superintendent had outlined that is going on in our classrooms. And, you know, that's not to say that we shouldn't be, that we should just let it go on cruise control. You know, this is a crisis. We need to ensure that there are more resources and and efforts dedicated to prevention. But just as important for to that discussion is what we're talking about exactly tonight. Ensuring that folks feel safe in our facilities whenever they're in our, in our schools and and knowing that if there is ever a potential tragedy that we can limit that. I won't say too much about the merits of the AEDs and naloxone. I think we've, I don't want to belabor that since we've had a range of discussion in June and in the, even in our report tonight. But I will offer an analogy because I know folks like analogies. You know, imagine if you were a passenger on a, on a passenger plane. And, you know, as per federal regulations, trans, transport regulations, no matches, no cigarette lighters, nothing like that, I can start a fire. And, you know, that's certainly something that's that we would expect from from people taking planes. But, you know, in the instances where somebody does end up with a lighter on a plane, you know, I, as a passenger, would feel very assured. So would others around me, knowing that there's a fire extinguisher on, on, on the plane itself. So we don't all go up in flames at thirty thousand feet. Same applies, the same principle, I believe, applies here. We don't, we shouldn't, and we don't, and we shouldn't need to wait for a tragedy to happen before we take action to prevent such things from happening within our schools and our facilities. So with that, I'll leave it at that. And thanks again for for the information here tonight.
Go ahead, Trustee Hamaguchi.
I just want to make one distinction in that the naloxone and the AEDs, they directly save lives. As for being the proactive strategies, I fully believe you need those as well because those prevent accidents, hopefully. You need both of them. And as for analogies, I always look at if someone's drowning, I don't throw them a book on how to learn how to swim. I throw them a life preserver. And when they get out of the water, then I teach them how to swim so that never happens again. So that's what I sort of feel with all this too is that, you know, after a bit, something happens and we want to be able to save that person's life. And once the person's life saved, yeah, then we can get into the proactive stuff. And and even before then, so they're both important, but they both kind of serve a different role too. So I I think it's important that we don't sort of mix the two together and say, well, we have one, we don't need the other. We need both. Thank you.
Trustee Wong.
Oh, I just think about is that, bring up is that we need to have a whole district or have any policy or protocol for use the AED or Naloxone kit in in our school district?
Well, okay, so, uh, truly Chair, so of course, as part of the implementation, it will be prudent for us to ensure that, again, that appropriate guidelines. As the board is well aware, we will not be the first district to to engage in this. There are the districts here in our province and elsewhere that have done this. We have, so there certainly would be, as part of the training, guidelines that will support to ensure that we are that this is, you know, being implemented appropriately. And I think that that's a fair question. And that is is one that certainly will be part of the implementation plan going forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just would like to ask the other question that I have. We, we spend that kind of money. I'd like to know, to know how much do we spend for the drug prevention program in our district? Because my, my, I guess, what I believe is an ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure. So if we could address the various costs or the very source of the problem before it reaches to that life and death situation, I think we owe to our district the obligation to make sure that we are preventing it. Thank you.
Yes, I would only comment, truly Chair, that, again, with respect to I fully just want to echo the comment that Trustee Amaguchi made with respect to, I don't, I don't, we believe in education and awareness as well as also being proactive around in the event of an emergency. So it's not this or that, of this proposition, but rather that we are taking all measures. In terms of quantifying costs, I don't know how we quantify that when in our curriculum, a K to twelve, we have curriculum expectations around healthy living and healthy choices. Does that, do we quantify cost in terms of teachers sharing that information or providing that information to students? So if you're, if you're asking for cost around prevention and maintenance, that's, that's difficult to quantify in terms of actual numbers. But I, but rest assured, and I think it's important for parents who are watching tonight, is that the, with respect to aspects in the curriculum, I would encourage parents to, 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 to look up the, the B C Elton Physical Education Curriculum. I would also encourage parents to look at those resources that the ministry have approved with respect to, especially the E-Race website. Because there's good information there for parents. There's information for students, for, for school staffs and for families. So I think that I fully agree with trustee, with trustees and members of the public and parents who say, well, look, we should also focus on education and awareness. Yes, and we are. And I think it's important, if there is, if there's a concern that we are only looking at at a proactive measure for emergency without paying attention to education, I think that's, that would be a fair criticism. So I would offer respectfully that education and training is critical. But also, we walk, parents have a role to play. And parents play critical roles as partners as well in in, in making sure that young people as well, working with schools to ensure that our young people are making the right choices. So, so that's the best answer I could give, you know.
Yeah, the reason I asked that, Madam Chair, is because there are many parents who are concerned about our drug prevention education. And I think we should be better off in trying to communicate and in greater collaborations with our community members about our prevention, drug prevention program.
Thank you. Trustee Tblotny.
Yes, well, I don't want to belabor everything that's been said. Prevention absolutely is the key. And there are many programs and outside agencies within our Richmond's district that are more than willing to provide information and and workshops with teachers. And I know that teachers are actually working with these organizations to, to, you know, they bring organizations in to speak to their students. And one of those is Richmond Addiction Services. And, and they also speak on not just drug addiction, but there's other addictions like gaming addiction, et cetera. And so I think there is a lot of education around addiction. And, and like I say, you know, our, our teachers are working with the community partners to provide that, that education, which will lead to prevention. But the onus is also on parents to do the research and to understand what's out there as well. And anything that we can do to help with that, I think we should be doing. So I'll just leave it at that and thank you very much. But I mean, you know, it, it, actually, the costs are not that high to also make sure that students and staff are safe because accidents do happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I, I saw trustee, pardon me, not trustee, Ms. Williams on Zoom with her hand up, but she's disappeared.
No, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay. Please go ahead. I can't.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Um, I just want to add, I was at McNeil, I'm an EA and I'm also the first VP for Q P. I was at McNeil between two thousand seven and two thousand ten when one of our grade ten students went into cardiac arrest. The responders, the first responders for the school were called, they were two teachers. Luckily, they were able to do CPR on this student until the ambulance got there. If we had had an AED, his survival, he did survive, but his survival would have been a lot more secure, I believe, with an AED. He was only sixteen years old. And it turned out that this was because of a heart whatever, damage to his heart that he'd had since birth. So I just want to make it very clear that the AED is not just for children who may have overdosed or what have you. It's completely separate from the naloxone. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. I, I would like to just, I don't see any other hands. I want to thank, again, this was a very fulsome report. And I really appreciate Superintendent Yu C's explanation of the different educational tools that we use outside of DARE. DARE isn't the only educational tool that's used in the school and and the built into our curriculum and all sorts of information. So I really appreciate that because I think we've had the name in our heads for so many, many, many years. We think that's the only one, and it isn't. And so I think we're doing a really good job and I'm happy. And all of my colleagues have come up with really great questions and comments. And thank you again. This is, again, what I wanted to say was this is a commitment, one more commitment to our district's emergency preparedness response program. Simple as that. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't know if I can ask, do we have Drug Prevention Week in our district?
Maybe we can look into that. We'll put an email together or something like that. That's a good question, but let's, yeah, outside of this, we'll, we'll do that. Thank you. I was just going to ask something now. Oh, I want to apologize. I went, I should have invited Ms. Williams to her question and her comment at question period, and I got carried away. So I do apologize to the gallery. That was my mistake, but I appreciate what she shared with us. But I took it out of order. Item seven B, we have a capital bylaw, three readings, report from the Secretary Treasurer is attached.
Thank you, thank you, Chairperson. Yeah, so my report is on page twenty eight of the public meeting package. So the school district recently received updated capital response letter from the Ministry of Education and Childcare regarding the district's twenty four, twenty five annual five-year capital plan submission for major capital programs. The letter confirmed the approval of a nine-classroom prefabricated modular classroom addition at Tomsett Elementary School with an estimated total cost of thirteen point five million dollars. So in accordance with section one forty three of the School Act, boards of education must adopt a capital bylaw for the capital projects approved in the capital plan response letter. So the recommendation from staff in front of the board is that the Board of Education adopt Capital Plan Bylaw number twenty four, twenty five dash CPSD thirty eight dash oh four by way of three readings. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. Do I have consensus that three readings of the twenty twenty four slash twenty five capital bylaw take place in this meeting?
Yeah, I have a question.
Good, thank you.
May I have a question?
Oh, sorry.
Just a person on the page twenty nine. So at the bylaw, so the, the the free line of the, the number three line of the document. So actually, we now as a Ministry of Education, do I need to add a child care on, on the document? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, correct. So that, that's a good catch, Trustee Wong.
Thank you. So I do have your consensus? Okay, thank you. I will read the first reading by, of the bylaw in full. Capital bylaw number two, twenty twenty four slash twenty five dash CPSD thirty eight dash oh four, Capital Plan twenty twenty four slash twenty five. Whereas, in accordance with section one four two of the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Number Thirty Eight, Richmond, hereinafter called the Board, has submitted a capital plan to the Minister of Education, hereinafter called the Minister. And the Minister has approved the capital plan or has approved a capital plan with modifications. Now, therefore, in accordance with section one forty three of the School Act, the Board has prepared this capital bylaw and agrees to do the following. A, authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute a capital project funding agreement related to the capital projects contemplated by the capital plan or the capital plan with modifications. B, upon ministerial approval to proceed, commence the capital project and proceed diligently and use its best efforts to complete each capital project substantially as directed by the Minister. C, observe and comply with any order, regulation or policy of the Minister as may be applicable to the Board or the capital project. And D, maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the capital project as may be prescribed by the Minister. Now, therefore, the Board enacts as follows. One, the capital bylaw of the Board for the twenty twenty four, twenty five capital plan as approved by the Minister to include the supported capital project specified in the letter addressed to the Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty four, is hereby adopted. Two, this capital bylaw may be cited as Richmond School District Number Thirty Eight, Capital Bylaw Number twenty twenty four slash twenty five dash CPSD thirty eight dash zero four. Can I have a mover and seconder for the first reading? Moved by Trustee Yang, seconded by Trustee Hamaguchi. I now call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. The first reading is, oh, yeah, it's carried. Five, I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. That the Board of Education, Richmond, approved Capital Bylaw Number twenty twenty four slash twenty five dash CPSD thirty eight dash zero four. Through the bylaw, the Board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute an annual program funding agreement and to proceed the approved capital projects diligently according to all applicable laws, regulations and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and seconder for the second reading? Moved by Trustee Wong, seconded by Trustee Yang. All those in favor? Sorry, go ahead.
That's the time, right? Yeah. Well, whereas, 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 this is sort of a good news story. I feel I feel like we're in a rock and a hard place because we need the seats desperately for city center. But it is a modified capital expense that we're, or I guess, recommendation that we're passing. It is a modification to our ask. We asked for an addition. We didn't ask for nine modular classrooms in the amount of thirteen point five million dollars. I will support the recommendation, but not with a big heart. I appreciate the ministry's, I guess, commitment to the funding and for children to have a seat. But I don't believe that adding but I don't believe that adding nine classrooms, modulators, to a school structure to same infrastructure, same office, and we're asking our staff and our students to go into a nine-classroom modular. It's, it's, it's a Band-Aid approach. I'm thankful, but I also think the ministry really needs to look at um, when they're providing capital funding, what is an all-around? What should a school look like and how should it be supportive of the people that work and learn in it? Uh, I hope that we, I, I know we will continue to advocate for the two um city-centered schools. We still need on top of this, and I hope the ministry is aware that this is a Band-Aid approach and that hopefully we can in future years have a proper addition to this school that will be um celebratory to what we, we put our students and our staff in. It's not just a box.
Trustee Yang, sorry. Trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Um, just a quick question, uh, and then a comment. Um, um, and my question is, just so I'm clear and the public knows as well, um, with this addition with Tomsett, um, will we still require the two city-centered schools that we've asked for in um our, our capital plan?
Yes, we do. We do need another two new city-centered schools, and this is well documented in our five-year capital plan.
Yeah, and I think that's very clear for, for the public to know that, uh, you know, certainly, you know, whenever there's a bylaw coming, that means we are getting uh, uh, support for, for infrastructure in our district, and I certainly celebrate that. Um, uh, and you know, this is uh, an announcement that follows three other announcements that we've had for Brickhouse, Cook, Tommy, uh, all of which are city-centered schools. So um, I think there's an understanding that this is where uh, the pressure is at, this, and that's where uh, the problems need to be addressed. Um, and with that said, you know, this is where we play um, a little bit of improv with. So, uh, you know, I guess this is my time to uh, put that piece out again to advocate for the need uh of our city center, uh, the need to have those two schools. And uh, until we see us, uh, that uh, happen, I'm sure I, along with my colleagues, will continue to do that work uh of advocacy. So, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, did you get the moved and seconder for that? Okay, thank you. Any more questions, comments? Um, I now call the question. All those in favor?
You still have the third reading. It's the second reading.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm calling for all those in favor for that second reading.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. I know it gets, uh, thank you. Uh, so the second reading is carried. I will now read the third reading of the bylaw in summary, as trustees have a full, have the full bylaw in front of you. That the Board of Education, Richmond, approve Capital Bylaw Number Twenty-twenty-four slash twenty-five dash CPSD thirty-eight dash zero four. Through the bylaw, the Board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute an annual program funding agreement and to proceed the approved capital projects diligently accordingly to, according to all applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. Can I have a mover and seconder for the third reading? Trustee Yang moved by, seconded by trustee Hamag, uh, sorry, trustee Blotney, thank you. Um, are there any questions or discussions? I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The third and finally, final reading is carried. Seven, the Capital Bylaw Twenty-twenty-four slash twenty-five dash CPSD dash oh four, having been read a first, second, and third time, is passed and adopted September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you. Okay. We are now at item C, approval of additional minor capital programs. Food Infrastructure Program, Report from the Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you, Chairperson. Yeah, my report is on page thirty-six of the public meeting package. So the purpose of this report is to provide a recommendation to the Board of Education to approve the minor capital plan to implement the school food, food infrastructure program across the district in ten elementary schools. Uh, these projects involve um, uh, appliance, appliance replacement and necessary kitchen adjustments to accommodate uh the new food program. Uh, the total estimated cost for these programs is about ninety-nine thousand dollars. So staff recommend that the Board of Education approve the additional minor capital projects for food infrastructure program in the twenty-five, twenty-six, five-year capital plan. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do I have anybody to move? Moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Yang. All those in favor? Yeah, that's, yes, do you have any question?
Yeah, yes. Are, are we, we're doing three readings for this or no? Just, just one reading?
Yes.
Okay, just a quick question.
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Um, so, um, yeah, just out of curiosity, obviously, this is great, and uh, I'd be supporting this. Um, and just a curiosity, this is all still provincial dollars, um, that's coming to the district?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Um, we've heard a lot of uh, news and uh, updates that, about the federal program, so uh, but this isn't federal dollars we're talking about?
No, no, this is still the provincial um, Feeding Future program.
So be a good question to ask our MPs next time we run into them and uh, so we can know more about what this federal uh, food uh, program is all about. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? So that was, uh, not, not at this point, but question period. I'll do it right this time. Thank you. Uh, so it was um trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Yang. All those in favor? Okay, carried. Uh, okay, we now, we next are at item D, Annual Strategic Plan Report to the Board from the Superintendent of Schools.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Trustees, uh, I'm pleased to speak to the uh, strategic plan annual report this evening. As you would have seen in the public board package, the report is uh, a comprehensive accounting of the work of staff looking back to last school year, complemented with a forward-looking focus into the school year. As a reminder, in May, trustees will recall, the Board hosted its annual partner group dinner where senior staff presented a number of achievements in relationship to the strategic plan. During the meeting, feedback was welcomed and received by staff. The purpose of uh, of the, uh, of this report tonight is to provide trustees with an annual update on progress made towards the Board's strategic plan during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and to outline upcoming areas of focus for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The report addresses each strategic priority in order and provides a brief summary of progress made within each objective area. The vast majority of the actions scheduled for completion during the past school year were achieved. And the district, through the work of every school and district-based employee, is making excellent progress on Board's strategic priorities. As outlined in Policy one zero one R, the Board will receive ongoing in-depth updates on progress throughout the school year, specifically through quarterly reports at, to the Board, and that's, uh, is done in public board meetings. So in December, we'll provide an update with respect to strategic priority one, inspired learners, as well as strategic priority, uh, priority two, equity and inclusion. In March of two thousand and twenty-five, we'll provide updates specific to uh, strategic priority three, optimize facilities and technology, as well as strategic priority four, a progressive workplace. And in June, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, we'll provide updates specific to strategic priority five, a connected learning community. I'm also pleased to share that as we transition from the current strategic plan to the next iteration of our strategic plan, that will continue to guide our work uh, with our partner groups, I will continue to work with our partner groups and engage with our community uh, in the months ahead during the school year to shape that plan, because that is a critical plan uh, that the Board directs, uh, that allows the Board to, uh, that the Board directs uh, the work that happens connected to each of those, uh, those, uh, those goals and priorities. With that, I conclude uh, the report this evening. Um, if, uh, if there are questions from trustees, uh, one of, uh, there are members of senior team, uh, folks who are continue daily to lead this important work, and I want to commend them for their leadership. Uh, not, uh, of course, we don't do this work alone. Uh, this is a work, and this is a celebration at every single employee in this organization. Uh, quite frankly, uh, owns and needs to be applauded for the good work that is happening in our district. So uh, I'm here to respond to questions, but I know my colleagues uh, will have better answers. Over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Go ahead, trustee Belisa.
Are there any highlight? Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any highlights that you'd like to let us know insofar as the strategic plan for two thousand and twenty-four?
Uh, so uh, through the chair, uh, what I would, what I would say is that, uh, if, I'll draw your attention to, uh, to the reports, and I, uh, staff have done a, uh, a very detailed job outlining uh, the progress made uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. It's quite extensive. And I know that, uh, uh, again, based on the feedback and the guidance from the Board, uh, we are not, uh, obviously, we're not going through each one of these piecemeal, but I, but I'm glad for the question because it allows us to say to, because this is, this document is accessible to everyone, uh, uh, who wants to take, take a read of it, uh, take a read. And uh, so I, I, I think it captures, uh, captures a lot of progress, a lot of progress. And I would just mention this last point, uh, it's the, the priorities in the strat plan and the actions connected to those priorities, uh, is part of the ongoing cycle of improvement work. Uh, we recognize that we'll never be, there will never be a point at time where we say, well, we are done now. Let's move on to something else. So as we continue to engage in this work, uh, in the spirit of continuous improvement, uh, those regular updates, those quarterly updates to the Board, uh, is the opportunity for the Board to again assess the level of implementation across our district. So, thank you.
Are there any other? No, seeing none. Uh, move on to item E, Diversity, Equity, and Include, In, Inclusion Advisory Committee Annual Update. We have a report from Assistant Superintendent Browning attached.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good evening. Um, the annual update from the DEI or Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee can be found in the board package on page eighty-two. The report outlines the actions that are in progress, the completed actions and the next steps for each priority area of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. As you can see, there is a focus on reconciliation, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district that spans many areas of our work across departments and in our schools. We are very appreciated, appreciative of the concerted efforts of staff and the valuable voices of our education partners who continue to shape and evolve this work. In the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee administered an employee and secondary student survey to determine progress in the priority areas and to establish next steps for focused action. The advisory committee spent time carefully analyzing the results. Um, and this data was shared previously in the strategic plan quarterly update to the Board and is incorporated into this report, reflected in the next step sections for actions in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, which we are excited to embark upon this year. Uh, so that is my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, as a trust, one of true trustees, uh, that sit on the DEI advisory committee, I know firsthand how committed, knowledgeable, and, uh, and passionate, uh, uh, that folks, uh, on that committee bring to the table. So, um, uh, and then there's certainly a big part of the work that, uh, we do as a district, so I just want to commend, uh, all their work and um, yeah, very important work that needs to be done, and we can't let our gas off the pedal. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else that had anything? Go ahead, trustee Belisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What are, what are some of the major challenges that we have, uh, in our inclusion policy? Especially with indigenous students, children, and youth in, in, uh, care, student with disabilities and diverse abilities, and ALL. How do we balance the, the, uh, policy uh, with this, uh, I call students with, with all this description that I mentioned, with the regular students and with the, you know, high achievers? How are we going, how do we, uh, I guess, uh, tackle all this kind of, uh, insurance that we have, the, you know, for our school district?
Through the chair, um, you ask a very big question, trustee Belisa. Um, and I would say that your question, uh, reflects, uh, the values of the school district um, and the focus that we have on inclusionary practices in the school district for many decades now, and how we have expanded that work to, uh, consider equity and inclusion in all areas. So, uh, we have a focus on, on students with disabilities, children, youth in care, indigenous learners, as you described. Uh, we are also, um, concerned about how our system might put up barriers to anybody, uh, with uh, diverse needs, whether that be a language barrier, um, uh, barriers related to racism, sexual orientation, and gender identity. And so through the inclusiveness of the work, the advisory committees, uh, in this case, the DEI advisory committee, um, were focused on gathering input from our education partners sitting around the table together, looking at what needs to be done, and you can see outlined in the report the priorities and the next steps for this year and some of the actions we want to take. Um, uh, that the committee will spearhead in terms of data we want to gather this year um, and actions that we want to take to support, uh, not only our learners, but our employees and the community uh, in regards to inclusion work.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. Um, I, I was lucky enough to sit on the, that particular committee for a little while, and it was um, wonderful to see the diversity of employees as part of that committee, um, which is so important, and, um, the shared information was, um, really quite powerful. So thank you very much for continuing the work that you do. It means a lot.
Thank you.
As Assistant Superintendent Nazar is absent this evening, it's my pleasure to, uh, introduce District Administration, District Administrator Hego, uh, of Continuing Education to present tonight's summer learning report.
Great, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Browning. Um, and good evening, trustees, Superintendent UC, and the executive, uh, rest of the executive team members. Just gonna wait for our presentation to come up on the screen here. While I'm waiting, I'm just very grateful to be just summarizing and presenting our Summer Learning two thousand and twenty-four report. As you see, uh, on the first slide, before I begin with the report, I always like to remind, uh, everyone that this is, uh, Continuing Education is a department within the school district. And our department right now currently supports over eleven thousand student registrations. We offer a wide range of learning opportunities for school-age and adult learners that stem from adult secondary high school credit courses, adult English courses, and school-age student summer programs, which are funded by the ministry, as well as Mandarin Language Studies, Youth and Children's Programs, as well as our education assistant programs, which are fee-paying programs. And I should learn to hit the next button. Right, uh, I was also like to remind you that we've kind of moved into this new generation of, or era of summer learning where, uh, we're more focused on offering opportunities where all students can find a program. We're more focused on offering opportunities where all students can find a program of interest or need versus students who were historically just forced to go to. May have perhaps a summer learning experience to enhance or to pass their courses. That's no longer the case in our summer learning sort of philosophy. We also want to point out that our, thank you. Do two things at once. Thank you. Like to point out that our summer learning programs align with our board's strategic priorities, which are to provide welcoming, engaging school environments where all can thrive. And also to support all learners so they may successfully complete their education with a sense of dignity, purpose and options. Our largest registration. So I get to now celebrate the summer learning programs that we just completed. I can't believe that we're already summarizing this. It felt like I was just here celebrating 2023. At that time, I was celebrating that that was the largest summer learning program year. And today I'm going to be reporting that this last summer. 2024 is our largest summer registration to date with over 6,800 student registrations. Embedded in that is our includes 204 fundable students with diverse abilities and disabilities, supported by a whole team of resource teachers. Education assistants, approximately forty, a counselor, hearing and vision teachers, as well as staff within our Vancouver Coastal Health. And thanks to at the time, Director of Learning Services. Brownwin Thompson helped our team actually implement and hire ELL teachers to support our ELL learners, which we feel is very important. And really wanted to support our district focus and we were able to support 1,460 ELL students this summer learning program. I won't go into a lot of details about the programs because many of you have heard this before, but I will highlight just the various programs and what they offered. As you know, our full credit program is a very popular program for our student population. It took place this year at two different secondary schools. And enrolled 1,461 students in a variety of grade ten to twelve courses. Students in this program enroll either to upgrade their standing in a course or to gain additional course credits. On the flip side, we have this inspiration program that I'm always very proud of and celebrating. And this year we expanded this program from six sites to eleven sites. When I say sites, that's elementary schools. We had two different classrooms at each of those sites. One was a grade two, three, and then the other was a grade four, five group. With the exception of Cook and thanks to Principal Woodess over there. We also sort of kind of played around with a grade six, seven inspiration class, which was really successful. You know, the focus of this program is really for principals to invite students that they feel could really benefit from this program. Focus on social emotional learning as well as hands-on activities and of course, just the love of, of exploring the curriculum. And one of the things we implemented this year that I was really proud of too, to support our families and our students' communities was we worked collaboratively, collaboratively with the NLI. And our Feeding Futures Program to provide healthy snacks for inspiration students. That was a huge success. Another program that took place at Cook Elementary, and again, thanks to, since Principal Woodess is here, thanks to her for hosting this site. We had to move from obviously Break House and this program is very popular. It's basically more of a techie kind of digital literacy. Kind of focused program, very hands-on and very popular amongst our elementary program. Because students as well. You know, I haven't highlighted this before, but we have three different high school sites where we offer enrichment programs and two of the sites, McNeil and. And Boyd are elementary enrichment programs and our Burnett site is our secondary enrichment program and they're very popular. We offer three blocks throughout the. Throughout the day and this year, actually, we introduced a financial literacy for elementary students using the BCTF resources are, that are great resources to use. And at the secondary level, we offered a Japanese language studies for secondary students. Actually, I wish I could have taken that course. But it was very fun and students were very excited and engaged in these different enrichment, new enrichment classes. Our summer fine arts again this year took place at Homa. We moved from West Wind. It's a program that students get to engage in a variety of different fine arts activities. They rotate around, which is a little bit different than the previous courses that I was just talking about. And they, they end the school, the summer program by celebrating with an assembly, showcasing and celebrating all the amazing learning that they've done. And it's always something that's very fun and engaging for the students and is very popular. Our connections program again is a unique program that started out of COVID or after COVID and this is for students going from grade seven to grade eight. This year it took place at Palmer and Burnett. It was very successful, especially at the Palmer site, which was experiencing a large burst of grade seven students or new grade eight students. This is a program that provides a transition to secondary school and focused on building connections in their new school setting while being introduced to some curricular focused learning intentions. And to end off, the last ministry funded program that we offered, of course, was something that introduced last year and this is the second year running. It's our inquiry to summer leadership through experiential learning. This year it encompassed or involved eighty students, eighty high school students that actually got to. Learn what it meant to be a leader. And I know that Superintendent UC actually visited one of the sites in the planning stages at Richmond High. And they then got to take their learning and go into the summer sites and volunteer in their summer programs, which was amazing. And you know, I have to say that actually. Superintendent Naster's daughter was part of that program and, and I heard from her specifically that she really enjoyed the experience, that it was very meaningful. And the reflections that were done by the students as it applied to their summer leader, leadership experience were amazing. So they got to actually report out in a summary. In whatever way or whatever medium they wanted to, and it was just such a great celebration of their learning as it reflected the, the meaningful experience that they gained in that, that course. And the last but not least, I know last year, I think when the trustees was curious about our fee paying camps. So this year we, we're very mindful of. Offering this because it provides an opportunity for students in elementary who only get one free funded course. And by offering fee paying camps, they can enhance their day in our summer learning programs. And so we actually expanded and doubled our fee paying camps, offering. Art Around the World, Badminton Cooking and Baking, Cooking Around the World, Creative Art and Maker Camp and Tech Art Camp, the last, last three being new fee paying camps and. Again, very successful and we'll be looking at how to enhance those offerings again for next year. Last but not least, in conclusion, I just want to highlight and celebrate, it was a really successful summer learning year. We had over 6,800 registrations, which is huge. We took place over nineteen different schools throughout the district with the help of our facilities and maintenance crew coordinating all that. And we employed over 200 summer staff. And so I just wanted to really highlight and celebrate what an amazing team all of them were to make this a very successful for our students' learning. And again, I just want to say that in going forward, we will continue to review all the summer learning programs to ensure that they align with our strategic. Plan goals. And I look forward to hearing what those new strategic goals and plans are going to be, that were always financially viable. And that we continue to meet the diverse learning interests and needs of our community. And last but not least, you know, while the teachers, support staff and administrators are the visible faces of summer learning. Still want to acknowledge and really highlight that we couldn't do it without the support of, you know, the rest of the team in our district here. It's amazing team to work with. You know, it's not, we offer programs when everyone else wants to be on holidays, but you know, everyone takes the time to work together collaboratively to. Really help us support our departments that we can offer quality summer learning programs. So thank you very much. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions or comments? Trustee Wong.
Well, I have read through your report on the page ninety-six. So you just reported that on ninety-seven is that you, you say that look ahead for the summer. Twenty twenty-five academic completion classes will no longer be offered. So and the report on the ninety-six, you say that this year have a forty-eight student and you provide six classes.
Yeah.
So you said the six classes focus on the Pacific grade or just like from eight to nine, eight to twelve.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out and I, you obviously caught that and put that in my report, but it was in the written report. Academic completion is what I explained earlier, is a program that is for students who in the regular full credit year in grades ten to twelve. Complete a course with thirty-five percent to forty-nine percent. And they have the opportunity to come into summer school and, and enhance their learning and actually do some work to make it a passing grade. You know, I think in this day and age of, of education and looking at the way that the new reporting order looks, we, we've been thinking about how we can do things differently. And so we're doing it differently because of the, the way that we, we want to report out to students, but we also are doing it differently because we're not seeing a huge population of students signing up for that program. So it's not as we go back to the viability of it financially, it's not something that we're, well, it is something that we're looking at how we can do things better. It is for grades, the academic completion is for grades ten to twelve students, but the, we also offered a skill building. And now in grade eight to nine, there is no more letter grades. It's actually, reporting is done through proficiency scales. And so what we created at that time when that change was made by the Ministry. Of Education and Children and Families was to. Provide classes and summer learning called skill building, which would be. Courses that were offered, kind of like a review class for those students that maybe were in the emerging level of their, of their assessment, final assessment. Again, that program was very, the attendance was quite low or the registration was quite low. So we're, we're looking at how we can better. Offer some programs to meet the needs of those students, to work with our principals and to see what we can do. To offer a better summer program that will be more meaningful and engaging for those students.
So I, I, as, as a trustee of school board, think about is a grade twelve student is really important is that competing the classes, right? At the summer. So if you, you are, I would like to know that this thirty-eight student, how many teachers serve them?
Yeah. So for our academic completion program, we had six different classes, both in our, in our scale building, grade eight to nine, in our academic completion, ten to eleven. And so that represented six different teachers total. And there were only forty-eight students in the academic completion class. So. Yep, we're just, you know, based on the registration, the low registration and also how we can maybe do things better together with our school administrators. We'll be looking at that over this course of this next term.
Really concerned, is it, really wish that, really hope that still have other ways for the student that. I know that if notice a cost is on summer, still have an impact for the student. Especially if there's twelve, grade twelve student. So if, if can, you can just hand another way to help this.
Absolutely. And you know, I think we're also lucky that we have a distributed learning summer program as well that we'll also be working closely with because some continuing, continuing education. Summer learning is not the only option. So I think from a collective whole, we'll be doing sort of coming together to have some.
The summer program is for all the student, what they did, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Sorry, I have trustee sergeant followed by trustee Hamaguchi and trustee Tablotny. Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you. I was reading the report on the week. Of what you're offering. And it's really clear to me that you're asking the students what they want. Because in order to develop this kind of diverse offerings, you have to know that someone's told you that we might want, we're. The financial literacy course. How great is that? I mean, we've been asking that for a long time. And then just the, the sort of, it looks like the summer learning is complementing the students' experience. A good thing. And this is really an extension of their learning. And to me, it looks like it's really fun. And you can see that by the numbers, the growth that you're having, the success you're having, and yet you're still reflecting. And my questions on that, I just really applaud the work that you're doing. It's really good. But I do have a question around. How you get that feedback? Are you, do you do a survey at the end of each one of these? Courses with the students or how, how are you hearing from students that this, this is working or this isn't working?
Chair, just a really good question. And I think we did start off just after COVID with some surveys to parents. So we did get some sort of feedback from. Students and parents. More recently, we get a lot of feedback from, you know, just visiting, not just being in the office, but getting onto sites and, and, and just sort of seeing what's going on and touching base with students face to face. And also through our teachers, our teachers, we can't offer these programs or these classes without the specialized. And experience of the teachers that we hire. And so through a team approach, you know, a lot of this information just comes right from the, the sites and the students and we gather them from historically. Surveys and satisfaction surveys and more recently, just through word of mouth. Parents also give us a lot of information through our registration process as well.
Thank you. Maybe not formal, but your hearing anecdotal. Just a quick follow-up, the inclusive nature that you are using with all of this summer learning and including and being diverse is fantastic. And I just wanted to applaud staff because it takes a lot of staff to, to do that and to be willing to work their summer. It, that's administrative and even the school, not even, but the custodians, all the people that make the, the school open and viable in the summer. So everyone can learn. Just want to say thanks. Thanks to all those staff who maybe take their holiday much shorter and say, hey, you know, I'll get back in the summer. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Trustee Hamaguchi followed by trustee Tablotny.
Listen, the fee paying courses, what's our thinking behind that? Are we, we would like more or if we just want to keep at a certain level because we want to keep things?
Yeah, it's a really challenging, and through the chair, sorry, through the trustee Hamaguchi, it's a really good question because it's one of those things where you have to really. Constantly looking at the needs of the registrations. We are limited to space. We're also limited. We have qualified teachers also teaching the fee paying courses. So we're also trying to find, you know, people that have an expertise. So we're always kind of balancing the space issue as well as the. The availability of qualified teachers that have an area of specialty that might be of interest to our clients, right? And so that's always the balance, the, but we do want to make sure that, you know, with only the ministry being able to provide one free course to elementary students, we also recognize there's a need. For students potentially to be there a little bit longer. And so that's why we offer as much as we can. So we're just constantly, it's like a juggling game, trying to find the space. Trying to find the, the interest and also having qualified teachers that are available and, and willing to offer these unique programs.
You know, we talked about this before about sports programs.
Yeah.
Because that's one area where. Parents will pay for sports programs. And I mean, we have the facilities. And so, you know, I, I know if we offer badminton, is there more thought to offering more sports programs?
You know, through the chair, I'd like to say that, you know, we're always thinking about offering more. The challenge really is space. We, we often plan our use of space in the school district back in February. And it's, it's kind of on a, a consideration of sort of the, and a facility grant work that's being done. Other user groups that are in our community that we share space with, as well as the urgent sort of facility space that becomes available or not available. And so, you know, we often look at sort of like basketball or other types of sports programs, but to be honest with you, the, one of the challenges we have is space in badminton. We offer at three different sites. And it's quite popular within our community. And we just haven't had the space to actually expand that to other types of sports. We have looked at outside space, but of course that poses some challenges as well, but we are constantly looking at that. Fortunately, we have classroom spaces for other types of, of camps such as tech and maker space, which has been really popular as well, especially with our primary students.
Trustee Tablotny.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for this report. It was interesting reading and. I really liked the connections program. I think that's, that's really important for. The students going from grade seven to grade eight because you know, I know a lot of students really struggle with that. That, that transition. And the student leadership program sounds fantastic. That, you know, getting that opportunity to volunteer as well. Within that program and look at leadership. I'm just curious though, on all these programs. I'm just curious though, on all these programs, do we have to turn any students away due to lack of availability? Um, are we still struggling with that or? And, you know, I'm just curious. And I know at one time we had problems um with parents trying to enroll and not being able to get in. So I'm, I'm just curious if everything's going smoother that way and, and if we still have to turn away students that want to participate in the summer learning.
Through the chair, very good question again. I mean, registration is one of those things that uh is very challenging because uh having a popular program is a good thing, but at the same time, uh, the popularity may not meet the needs of having enough space for all. Uh, but we do have a fair process where, you know, there is a registration day. We, we provide as much uh information as we can. I know that trustee Yang has has asked about the question about accessibility through languages. And so on our website, there's that accessibility option now to, to translate. And we also have hired staff to uh translate as well that speak Mandarin and Cantonese as well as French. And so do we meet the needs of all the res- our registration is very busy. We probably fill up our full credit within the first uh, I would say day. So it's very popular. But I think that's a good thing. And uh we just continuously try to look at how we can better do things better with our registration system.
Trustee Belisa.
Thank you, Madame Chair. I am very glad that you offer a financial literacy in the summer enrollment program that we have. I always equate financial literacy to, that would lead us to financial freedom and financial independence, which we need in this country. And uh I don't know if we offer the same kind of content and subject in our regular classes. If it is, what are some of the fundamental variants? And if it is not, why not?
Well, through the chair, you know, I can just comment right now in our summer learning programs. Uh, the financial literacy program, we're very lucky because we had a teacher who not only was comfortable and used the BCTF Financial Literacy Resources and curriculum. But this particular teacher also had some business background and ran a company at one point. So we're very lucky to have that teacher on board, teaching a really engaging uh hands-on um class in financial literacy for our elementary students. I also know as a principal of elementary schools for fourteen years that often financial literacy is, is embedded and integrated in the numeracy curriculum. And so, you know, I can't comment on exactly who's, you know, what that looks like right now. But when I was a principal in schools, often that was integrated in the, in the math and numeracy curriculum through the grades.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you, chairperson. And uh, no questions for me. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ego for being here for report. Uh, as uh many of us already mentioned, you know, uh, you know, reason why it's so successful, our summer programs are, is because of uh the dedication of staff that are taking out that uh that time during their supposed holidays, right? And, and just making time for, 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 to make sure that this happens and someone who's often very strapped on vacation days. I'm uh, I am aware of the difficulties around that. And so yeah, full appreciation to you and everybody who's delivered our program this year.
I just have a comment. Um, I was by Hugh Boyd many times and a couple of the other schools through the summer. And one of the things that stuck out similar to what trustee sergeant has said is the diversity and the happiness of the kids. And it's like the stigma of having to go to summer school is gone. It, it, you just don't see it this, the way it used to be many, many, many years ago. And um the equity and the diversity, and I love how you were talking about the inspiration program and principals inviting students and for the social emotional piece, like that's such a well-rounded offering of, of um meeting the needs of our kids. So um thank you. Like to me, continuing education has grown to true continuing education and um the, the teachers and resource and EA's and everybody that's, that's, I can't mention, but that uh is involved is um they're teaching from their hearts and it's, it's showing. So thank you very much. It's great.
Thank you. On behalf of the uh summer learning team.
Excellent. Okay, B. Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you. Uh, well, recently, our provincial association is called British Columbia School Trustees Association. And uh we are a member, obviously in Richmond, and they have put forward a recent media release called uh advancing advocacy efforts ahead of the twenty twenty four election with key issues addressed to government officials. Uh, the three top issues are recruitment and retention of staff, capital and deferred maintenance funding, and student and inclusive education student success. So those were all based on sixty districts sharing what their work, what they need and what their needs are. And through motions at our AGM. And BCSTA has put together a toolkit for boards of education to use to bring awareness to potential candidates that are running. And there is actually a provincial election happening in twenty days. And so as advocates, it's our role to bring uh awareness to the candidates. You know, I think it's, we probably don't have enough time to hold a, an all candidates meeting. But it certainly was something we did in the past. Uh, I know there is one tomorrow night. Being offered not around education, but I think there could be ways that we can engage perhaps with our partners to look for ways to actually bring forward the top issues in education and ask the candidates, what are your thoughts on this? They are candidates, but some of them will actually form government. And so we need to make sure they're fully uh educated in what's happening on the ground with education. So um we haven't had too much discussion yet. Um, but I think there was a suggestion that um, did you want to put forward? So I'll, I'll pass it off to trustee Yang. Um, there was one suggestion made earlier that perhaps we could move on fairly quickly.
Thank you very much, chairperson. And yeah, certainly, um, you know, we're, believe it or not, it's uh, we're only twenty something days away from uh selecting our next provincial government. And uh, you know, certainly, public education is a very, very important public good. Uh, I know the tone and tenor of uh the discussions uh, you know, with, with all elections, uh, very issues based. But uh, you know, certainly our job, I, I certainly believe that we need to take advantage of this time to really advocate for the issues and the challenges that we have uh for public education and specifically for the issues here in Richmond. And there are quite a lot, you know, uh, we've mentioned that uh you know, we need two city center schools. Uh, we also need to recruit more and retain more staff for, for our district. Members of our uh school community are being attacked, especially uh those who uh identify as two S LGBTQ plus. Uh, we have a, a significant amount of uh ELL learners in our district. How do we support um their education? And so I think these are issues within issues, uh, the broader issue of uh public education. And certainly this is now the time to, to advocate. And certainly with the short timeline, um, uh, I do have a motion to uh, to write a, a letter and have that as a start, uh, starter uh conversation on our advocacy, but uh certainly you know, the work goes on and depending on how fast we can move, we can uh achieve a lot more if we do it together. So, and I do have the text.
Okay, please go ahead.
You're ready, chairperson. Um, I move that the Board of Education in consultation and collaboration with education partner groups write an advocacy letter outlining public education priorities in Richmond.
Do I have a second or? All those in, or any, all those in favor? Okay. Carrie. Do you have a question or?
More of suggestion, Madame Chair. I, I, I agree with the, with the letter. But it, it is an opportunity for, I think, for the board to, to, to ask to have like a questionnaire from different partners group, to ask specific questions with regard to their group and collate it and probably submit to to uh MLAs or to the candidates. You know, like when we run, when we have the campaign, some organizations send a questionnaire for us to respond or to reply. I perhaps the same kind of idea. We could, we could ask probably from our partner groups if you would like to uh, I guess, have a questionnaire from, you know, question from them and then we can collate and send it to the to the candidates. I don't know if that idea would work.
I think with, with the motion that's been passed, it's, it, we're talking about collaboration. So it fits right into that kind of, whether we do it by questionnaire or whatever, but as trustee Yang's uh, the letter will, will, that's what we'll get working on right away with our, invite our partner groups to join with us.
I hope that letter would, would collate all the questions from the uh, our partners.
Collaborate with them. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're now to item nine, questions from the public. Please come forward. Introduce, sit down and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Connie Wong. Actually, is RDPA uh president two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty five. Yeah, um, actually, I'm very happy tonight. So I had the first meeting uh in the new year. So, and then um, we are the partner groups so together uh during the whole month. Uh, I'm lucky, I didn't lost it tonight. Okay. So thank you all the uh trustee and um also chairs, uh Heather's, so Chris superintendent, so uh teach me a lot of stuff. Yeah, very appreciate that. And uh I totally agree, um to you then, uh, president needs to say, uh, she need the money for teacher. Yes. And then uh, cause I, from parent's side, so I found out uh so many teachers are missing in the school. Yeah, uh if make parent comfortable, so I think uh school board and um government should be, uh, support the teacher. So, and then uh make everything so smooth in the school in Richmond district. This is my opinion.
Thank you.
My question is, um, since it's the lawsuit and the AED is already proof in the school district for uh safety, student and staff, uh life, yeah, which is agreed that. But I would like to ask for uh school board can provide more education for students. So far away from the drugs, so more important. The helping or maybe counseling for the student and parent. This is my suggest. And last question, so for Cindy, so about the food program. So I saw you guys's uh replacement, um, the stove and the kitchen, so kind of like that. So are you guys provide a free lunch for the elementary school? Or just as the same as like the last year, uh government provide like the free lunch in the school or whatever the student hungry, they just pick from the refrigerator and then uh yeah, feed themselves.
That's a really good, good question. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Wong. So the, uh, the um, so the, the provincial program is called the Feeding Futures Program. So what's happening uh in Richmond, we're spending the provincial funding in different categories. For example, we're providing a per student grant to our schools. And so it's up to the school principals to provide whatever program that meets their student needs locally. Because every school has different unique situation, right? So we're providing funding to our, uh, to, to our principals and they can take the funding to um, uh, to provide the appropriate programs, whether it's free lunch or whether it's a breakfast program or lunch program or snack program, depending on the local situation. So there's not, there isn't a unique, uh, I mean, uh, uniform approach to all schools. So it's, it's the uh principal's decision locally. And secondly, uh, we do have um Feeding Futures Department, uh, which is under our Educational Services Department. So we have uh our Feeding Futures uh manager Ian Lai, he actually uh connect with local schools to look at the different needs in different schools. And we also, our school district, we also collaborate with um organization, local Richmond organizations, for example, the um Richmond Food Bank program, uh Richmond Food, Food Bank and uh the Backpack Buddies, we collaborate with those programs and they will provide a different, whether it's breakfast or lunch, different programs or snack programs based on the local needs. So yes, free lunch could be one of the Feeding Futures uh program activities. Uh, but it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily apply to every school. It depends on the local needs.
Okay, so all the, for all the students or just for some student need?
Oh, no, it's for all students or all students, yes.
It's why the parent always asking me, uh, did the kids so have a free lunch in the future? So this is the program you talk about.
Yes, yes. So if you do have.
So yeah, is it set up like a canteen or just like the kitchen, uh, some stuff cooking the all the food for all the students?
Yeah, so it really depends on the local school's decision and depending on what uh, what programs are being provided at a local school level. So if you have a su- a parent who has specific questions about a Pacific, a specific schools program, you can direct the parent to the school principal to get more information.
Okay, thank you. Very care. Terrify that. Thank you. So uh very beautiful picture in the Richmond district. So, which is I'm very appreciate that. So, and then, yeah, um, Canada uh education is very good. Very best in the world. I told everyone, okay? So I hope we can work together, make Richmond district and school, parent, students, family. It's in the future is very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. That's all my.
Very much. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item ten, standing committee reports. Audit committee, trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, uh, chairperson. So uh in the agenda package, uh, page ninety eight is the twenty twenty three, twenty four audited financial statements. And uh pleased to say that uh this year uh also is um once again a clean audit and um we did not have any material statements to report. There are uh certain accounting, uh, public sector accounting standard matters that the, that staff and the committee will continue to monitor uh as these uh changes are made. But uh all in all, great work by staff. I want to thank uh secretary treasurer, the entire uh finance team, um, our, our auditors at uh KPMG for their hard work over the summer. Uh, and uh just shows uh once again that um our financial practices and uh our, our budgeting is uh professional and prudent. So with that, um, the, there is um a recommendation that the Board of Education Richmond approved the audit at financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four as presented. And further that the Chair of the Board, the Superintendent of Schools and the Secretary Treasurer be authorized to sign the audited financial statements. And I will so move.
Okay, seconded by trustee Belisa. Uh, all those in favor? Carrie. Thank you. Uh, education committee, uh, we had a meeting on June the twelfth and uh, and also Wednesday, September eighteenth.
and also Wednesday, September eighteenth. And it was fascinating on September eighteenth, it was on digital devices and indigenous education with relation to s- place. And um, yeah, it was very informative. Our next meeting is September eighteenth. No, it isn't. Pardon me, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Facilities and building, trustee Hamaguchi.
Uh, minutes of the meeting held on June fifth, uh, task for information. Meeting was held on Wednesday, September the fourth. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October second uh at four thirty. Thank you.
Finance and legal, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much. Uh, there is a recommendation. It is in your package and I'll move that whereas the Board of Education of School District Thirty-Eight Richmond is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties. Be it resolved and in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Thirty-Eight Richmond approves trustees' expenses paid during the three-month period ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight thirty-two cents.
Do you have a sec? Oh, yes, you said move. Do I have a second, trustee Wong? All those in favor? Carrie. Policy committee, trustee Tblotny.
Yes, I'm here. Konnichiwa. In Japan. Um. I have a notice of motion for policy two oh three R and two oh three G. Uh, trustees stipend and expenses and um this was in regard to um uh having trustees having an annual allotment of five hundred dollars to attend events. Um, that there were, if the policy was kind of ambiguous before and so there were some adjustments made to the policy. They're relatively minor. But it allows um trustees to have, you know, um uh a certain amount of money to attend community events, which are really important for us to connect with people and to talk to people. So uh that notice of motion that will come to the next uh board meeting, October twenty-third. And then I also have to, hang on, gotta get to the right page. Um. Another notice of motion, uh, that is the policy four hundred R five smoking and alcohol consumption and policy eight oh one point one R community use of district facilities. And uh within that, there was discussion of some events being held at schools and things. Um, uh, there was some concern um regarding events and liability for the school district. And um so that policy went underwent, you know, quite a bit of discussion and revision. And so that will be coming forward to the October twenty-third meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. And your next meeting?
Oh, next meeting is, goodness. So many pages here, I don't know.
I can
Yeah, if you got the date, that would be good because I'm jumping around.
Okay, it's October fifteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will be there. In the fly.
Heartboard committee and representative reports. We had a council board liaison committee. Meeting was held on September eleventh and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November the sixth at nine thirty. B C S T A, trustee A.
You very much, chairperson. Uh, provincial council will be held uh on October twenty-fifth and uh as the representative, I will be attending.
Thank you. B C P C, trustee Tblotny.
B C P C, you know, I didn't pull it out of my email, but I am registered to attend um something and I can't remember what it is, but um it's an annual uh meeting. So I will be attending uh on behalf of the board for that. And I have been sending out whatever notices I've been getting to everybody. So I hope you've been reading them.
Thank you. Hey, item twelve, correspondence. We have none for action or for information. So I'll look and uh for a mover and a seconder to adjourn tonight's meeting. Moved by trust Hamaguchi, seconded by trustee Wong. All those in favor? Carrie. Thank you for joining us this evening. And um safe ride home. And uh take good care.
Just a question now for me. So we're going back in camera. So go back to the in-camera link.